Welcome to the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County Primary Candidate Forum for Puyallup School District Director Positions 1 and 4. I am Lydia Zapata, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and the audience to this Community Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that we do this. Anyone 16 years of age or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. That's tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. The candidates in ballot order for Puyallup School District Director Position 1 are Maddie Namens, William T. Rolland, Jake Kukow, Mary Shuldheins, Cody Rochensky. And for Puyallup School District Director 4 Position are Marcello Mancini, Nicole Weber, and David Berg. Maddie Namens and Mary Shuldheins declined to participate, and Cody Rochensky did not respond to multiple requests to participate. This year's primary election is August 3rd. You should have received your ballot if you are a registered voter. If you are not yet registered, you still have time, or if you've moved, you can check votewa.gov by July 26th. That's votewa.gov by July 26th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM August 3rd. Any race with fewer than three candidates will not be on the primary ballot, as those candidates will automatically proceed to the general election on August 2nd. The forum is being recorded and will be posted at our website, which again is tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County and our co-sponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to 253-906-4734. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Teri Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will be holding up cards to let candidates know that they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then when it's time to stop. When you see the red stop card, you may finish a short sentence. I will stop you, so please don't push it. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper, Teri Baker. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask you to each confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things include addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Please confirm by giving me a thumbs up. Thank you, everyone. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate will make a one-minute closing statement. The order of the opening statements in ballot order, and I have to check here, did William Rolland join us? Oh, yes, okay, did join us, okay. So, the order of the two-minute opening statements are ballot order, so we'll start with William T. Rolland, and then Jake Kukow, and then Marcello Mancini, and then Nicole Weber, and then David Berg. Okay. William, please give us your two-minute statement. You're on mute.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. My name is William Rolland. I'm running for Gallup School Board, Position 1. One of the reasons why I'm running is very simple. I have a high-functioning special needs daughter that I've learned a lot about what's going on in our school district, and I see where some of the challenges are. We need to start getting back to the basics of academics, and we are not meeting the standards according to our OSPI, and our focus needs to be drawn back in. I am a fighter, and I will stand my ground. If it is factual, it is something that I will stand on, and I will not move off because of pressure. We need to bring the school board back to being in control. Our school board is our final say, so we need to focus on our children, the safety, the academics, and the actual outcome. We are in a challenging time. We've seen a lot of things happen in the last year, and we need to focus back on the children's needs and not what may be an agenda or an ideology. So, I am pleased to be running for the school board to bring a voice back to the community and back for our kids. It's important that they are heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Jake, please.
Unmuted, okay. I am here tonight because I believe in the future of our community. If there were only one thing that would ensure that we not only survive but thrive, it is the education of our future generations. In a world which we find ourselves increasingly divided along partisan lines, it is imperative that we understand not every aspect of government is political. The safety and education of our children must rise above. We, as a people, pride ourselves on being able to think independently and come to our own conclusions, given evidence and personal experience. We learn from the mistakes and build upon the successes of others, but we're not born this way. That is a skill that must be nurtured and encouraged in our children. To put it extremely simply, critical thinking is critical. Many will likely comment on how our tax dollars are used. Some will say that more taxes are the answer. Some will say that a restructuring of public funds is more important, and I absolutely agree. 100% school funding must be a priority. For nearly everything that comes after can be remedied through education. When balancing a budget, schools need to be near, if not at, the top. Now, I'm not going to pretend that I'm running for city council or state senate, but I do promise to add my voice to the demands for change loudly. The days of anyone being less than need to be behind us. Is a child who completely by chance attends a school in a poorer community less deserving of quality education than another who equally by chance resides in a wealthier community? All education should be equal. Is a Big Mac better than one McDonald's than another? No, they're the same, and that's why it works. We must set a high minimum standard for every school and make it happen. And I am out of time.
Thank you. Marcello?
Hi there. My name is Marcello Mancini, and I'm running for Position 4 of the school board. Just a little bit of background by myself, I've been in this area for 30-plus years, with 21 years in the Puyallup School District. We came to this area after serving in the military back in the early 90s, and a proud parent of two Puyallup School District graduates. Both my children attended from K through 12. My last one graduated from Emma Ridge High School back in 2017, and I continue to stay involved in the district even though both my children are out. Prior to them leaving, I was involved with the PTA, PTSA, Legislative Representative, and now I currently serve on the Bond Oversight Committee for the district, which I'm sure we'll have a little bit of opportunity later on to discuss. I'm running for this position based on several factors. Number one, as a service community leader and being able to meet with a lot of parents, the biggest issue right now is our response to COVID and what's going to happen to our students as we move forward, going into the school year, and the issues that are surrounding COVID and getting our kids and our students caught up with regards to their education. Second, I'm concerned about the academic results that we've seen over the last several years, not counting the COVID situation. So, that's going to take place on its own with regards to where we stand going into the new school year and testing, and how we can improve on what, again, has been diminishing returns with regards to our mathematics and science scores. And lastly, I'm concerned about the safety of our students, making sure that they feel like they're, they feel welcome in school, that they're included in all activities, and then also for their physical safety on the campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole?
Good evening. My name's Nicole Weber. I'm running for the Puyallup School District, Position 4. I have been in the district a little over 10 years. I have two kids that are in junior high, and a boy and a girl ages 12 and 14, getting into those crazy years. But my husband works for the railroad with BNSF Railroad, and we've been married 15 years. I'm from Spokane originally, went to Listen Clark High School and graduated there, have a degree from WSU in social sciences with minors in political science and communications. I recently, this last session, worked in the legislature for Senator Sharon Brown and have worked for other legislators on issues like all-day kindergarten, working on standards so that kids from ages kindergarten through 3rd would rise to reading and math so that we can get them graduated and on those high levels of skills, and that's why I'm running, because I felt it was critical to get out of COVID land and get our kids back out of mental health issues, working with groups and other people to get, and the teachers, getting them back on track with things so that we can get our grades and standards up and state testing taken again, because we didn't have to do that this year yet. And so, I want those standards high so we can compete in this, in this next 10 decade, 50 years. We have to be, it's a critical time for us to get back on that track, and I do not want us to lose that. I believe parents and people who've been involved also need their voices heard, and that's why essentially I chose to run again and would appreciate your hearing our talk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is David Berg. I am the proud parent of three boys who've been in the Puyallup School District. My oldest two are both Puyallup High School graduates, and my youngest will be a sophomore at Puyallup High School this year. For the last 17 years, I've been an active volunteer in the district. I've been a PTA member and a member of the PTA Legislative Team, both locally and at the state level, helped to co-chair the PTA's Advocacy Day. I've worked with the Washington Coalition for Gifted Education, providing educational opportunities for students across the state. Locally, I've also been a YMCAU sports coach and really enjoyed being able to be in my kids' classes, seeing what's going on on a regular basis. Equity has been, sorry, advocacy has been an important part of my life for the last 17 years. I've been extremely involved in legislative advocacy work, both locally and at the state level, trying to make sure that we had equitable educational opportunities for all students, regardless of their zip code. Work that I was involved in directly increased opportunities for approximately 15,000 to 20,000 students each year who had been historically excluded from opportunities. We passed some legislation, made some updates, worked and passed things on a bipartisan basis that received unanimous votes on the floor of the legislature. I know what it's like to work with a diverse group with diverse opinions and to build consensus, to move things forward on complicated and controversial issues. In our district, we've had a history recently with a difficult transition from one superintendent with a difficult labor situation and strike, and then following that up with COVID situation. We really haven't had a chance to get back together to communicate, to heal, and begin to work together as a team. I'm here to help make sure that all of us can work together, parents, teachers, administrators, students, to receive, to reach our goals. Thank you.
Thank you all. Now, we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer the question, unless it's a 60-second question. And again, the audience can text questions to 253-906-4734. Okay, the candidate order will rotate with each question. So, for question 1, we'll start with Jake. "OSPI Statistics for the Puyallup School District," and I realize that these are old because they weren't testing during COVID, "but OSPI statistics for the Puyallup School District are slightly better than the state average in English, math, and science, but the statistics are still not really great. Less than 65% are at grade-level English and less than 52% in math and less than 49% in science. What is your plan to help improve achievement for all students in the Puyallup School District, particularly in science and math?" And we'll start with Jake.
Well, it's important that we listen to the people who know the best, and that's the teachers. The teachers are the ones who will get our children to where they need to be, give them the tools they need to succeed, and therefore allow us to succeed. I believe that's the answer to the question.
Thank you. Marcello?
So, as far as the curriculum is concerned, this is one of the things that I've been concerned about, as I've discussed and doorballed into parents and educators alike. And the question I've posed to some of the educators is, why do they think that some of those scores are, again, they're above from the state average, but even if you compare them from year to year in the school district themselves, they've actually been declining as well? And so, a couple of things in there with regards to the academics. As I've talked to a couple of the teachers, their feelings about the assessment and the smarter balance assessments, those have been challenging to be able to implement and work with and teach to with regards to the curriculum that they're presenting in the classrooms. And so, that's been a little bit of a challenge for some of the teachers, then again, the feedback that I've gotten. And then also, I've been just kind of sharing that I feel like there's a lot of distractions that are coming in from the outside with regards to the material that's being presented, how it's being presented. And these distractions are, I think, taken away from what's important in the classroom, and that is preparing our students and specifically focusing on the STEM, the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics curriculum that is not necessarily being prioritized with regards to the type of topics that are being brought up inside the classroom. So, I think there's some opportunities for educators and for district leaders to be able to kind of look at the information and the data and have a plan of attack on what, on how to improve those areas.
Thank you. Nicole?
I believe the board, working together with, especially on the budget, this last legislative session, there was quite a bit of money left for support services, and I've worked in the district and especially RTI and other programs that would be able to push in more support. Those RTI classes are vital to those who are struggling or behind, that we either get them bigger or get kids assessed where they need to go, and that, I think, is going to be the first main step. And then we will need to work together with the funds and with the budget to assess those things and put them where they go. And then, this last couple of board meetings, they've been approving a new science program, which sounds fantastically updated, and I find that one that sounds exactly like what the kids need, especially the girls for STEM and getting them interested in science, and then math. Like I said, the RTI and working with the teachers and the staff on how to get those steps taken so kids can be supported and feel strong and confident by the services that they can get from the schools.
Thank you. David?
So, one of the things that's important for me to keep in mind whenever we're talking about standardized test results is that if the test results and the scores aren't useful for helping teachers inform instruction, then they're not really that useful to me. The reporting of numbers gives us some general ideas, but if teachers can't get that information in a timely fashion and be able to turn it around and actually use it to inform instruction, then it's really not doing us the value that we need. On the specific answer for science, the new science curriculum that the district has just adopted, looks like it will be an excellent match. We made some changes statewide as to what was expected for our students in their science achievement. Updating the curriculum is an absolutely critical step to align what we're teaching with what the kids are going to be assessed on, but that didn't happen until now certainly put our kids at a disadvantage. In the area of math, the district's recovery plan, or once we are able to return to the classroom this fall, includes a significant focus on additional instruction for math, additional support staffing to deal specifically with the math scores. Most of it is targeted at the older grade levels, but it's also important that we make sure that we're addressing concerns younger, because if we don't prepare kids younger, then when they do reach that junior high school level, reach that high school level, they're not going to be prepared to take the advanced math classes that could serve them so well. Thank you.
Thank you. William?
Well, in regards to the instruction, I'm going to speak a little bit about my daughter and what my wife and I had been able to determine with the COVID shutdowns. To be honest, my daughter, okay, being nine years old, been on an IEP for the entire time, and what actually we figured out is that it needs to be a personal instruction since our teachers need to be able to utilize their experience and their education to be able to find the things that make it easy for a child to learn. One of the things we learned is that we, because my daughter was so far behind, my wife and I decided that we were not going to let her, okay, sit idle after the shutdown. We took our daughter from not being able to read, not being able to do single-digit math, and not be able to spell, to in six months, because we know our daughter, she's able to spell up to three-letter words, she can do now double-digit, okay, math, and she's reading kindergarten and first-grade books. So, what I've learned out of this is that we need to empower our teachers to take what they know and the relationship that they've built with the students to find the way to get the information to them. The other thing is, is that we do need to ensure that our curriculum is specific and is accurate as we're teaching it, and we need to stay on the 11 topics that's in our policies that our children are supposed to learn. Critical thinking is one thing that science can help build. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question will just be 60 seconds. "OSPI Statistics indicate that fewer than 53% of kindergarteners in the Puyallup School District are ready in six areas of development and learning. What is your plan to improve early learning readiness?" And we'll start with Marcello.
So, I know the state of Washington has recently passed legislation that emphasizes early childhood education and has been funded, so there's going to be an opportunity for the school district to utilize those funds and continue to build upon the early childhood education program that they've built up over the last several years. Recently, the expanded elementary schools have built classrooms for preschools, and so we're starting to see, and those are going to be, those just started this, they'll be starting this year now that the kids, the students will be back in the districts. So, there's several schools now that will be hosting these early childhood development classrooms for preschool, and so we should start seeing, and of course, the funding is part of that, so we should start seeing some successes and some, you know, some statistics there to show how well we're doing as a school district, once we start those programs.
Thank you. Nicole?
From working in the classroom with the kids, a lot of it is believing in them and having support through the teachers and the staff, this pair of educators that are in there, and I believe that pushing them, and I'm a strong believer in kindergarten through 3rd grade, I believe that the classroom has that structure, and kindergarten specifically takes that time to get them to get set and get going. I know that the legislature put some money out there to start that, but it still has a tentative pass on that because it's funded, because of its funding, and it's got a lawsuit on it. So, I'm not planning on that support yet, because I think that COVID means that we have parent groups, small parent groups or other groups that help get the kids reading, doing math. We, Khan Math is a great source that we've used in many of the classes, and continuing those regular things with the teachers and the other tools, I believe, are great.
David?
It's important when we look at the numbers for kindergarten readiness that we not treat every student in the district the same. If we actually look at some more details on those numbers, we'll see that we lag even further behind in kindergarten readiness when we're looking at our students who are from low-income families, at our students who are students of color, our BIPOC community. Not everybody is at the same point when they're entering kindergarten, and if we've got an issue, then we need to make sure we target our interventions at the students who need it most. The students that need it most are those students who have been facing additional challenges, those who are in that low-income situation, who maybe don't have the same access to quality childcare, who have parents who are trying hard to make ends meet. So, when we're doing our interventions, we need to be very mindful of who it is that we're targeting and make sure that we invest the money where it will do the most good.
Thank you. William?
In regards to this, you know, I mean, my daughter actually is already going to pre-K because my wife and I had noticed she wasn't developing. So, the one thing that I think would help our children be better coming in is to provide a instruction or information to parents to allow them to work with their children, okay, even before they enter into the school district. My wife and I, being, you know, astute to what's going on with our kids, we knew that something was wrong. So, we took the initiative to go ahead and reach out and find a way to get some extra instruction for her. But what would help with a lot of the low-income, the parents that work, you know, all the time during the day, they don't get the time. So, if we could come up with a part of our website, maybe, to provide information to the parents and redirect it, redirect them to it, I think that we can start teaching our kids even beforehand and actually make a big difference on these actual statistics.
Thank you. Jake?
So, I believe that outreach is important. If we can get the teachers, the educators who are going to be teaching these children when they do reach kindergarten, to have some kind of community
Gathering.
... relationship with the parents beforehand.
Establish that connection.
You know, to establish the connection, get some much-needed help if they needed. Well, okay.
You've seen firsthand.
I've seen firsthand the disparity between
K through 3rd.
You know, K through 3rd grade.
Wow. Volunteering.
Through some of my volunteering with the unhoused, and it takes a huge toll. And if these teachers were empowered to reach out and spend some time, or if there was a position even specifically for that, it would be a great benefit to our children.
Thank you. Next. Thank you. Next question, 90 seconds. What do you see? And and just a heads up, we'll be starting with Nicole. The question is, what do you see as the most critical aspects of the academic and student well-being recovery plan that the Puyallup School District has recently developed and presented to the current school board? Nicole.
First and foremost, the mental health issue. It's not a subject per se, but that is a number one area, just getting our kids out of being in laptopville and get them back to connection with family and teachers. That is 100%. I'm so excited that we have five-day school week, five days a week going back in. I believe that the areas that we can support the teachers with the math and the sciences that that we've talked about are critical with them getting the kids on track, the RTI programs, the testing for the state testing, that one is going to be a difficult issue, I think, since it's kind of random and not as solid as normal. And I believe that getting them back up to standards for those areas would be imperative for us to get moving on those.
I think that we've lost our moderator. She appears to have lost her internet service. So I'm going to try and step in and hopefully she will come back. So I I haven't been really tracking what order the candidates have been in. So I'm just going to do this randomly here. So David Burke, Burke, let's have you go next.
So one of the things that I think is going to be extremely important as our kids return to the classroom, obviously, our mental health transition is going to be important. Supports there are going to be critical. We can't expect that things are going to return to normal on day one. We can't expect that things are going to return to normal by the end of the first month or even the first year. This is going to be a several-year process to transition back into any sense of real normalcy. During that time, we're going to need to be flexible. We're going to need to consider doing things a little bit differently than we've done them in the past. One of the issues that we regularly face is teachers needing to differentiate instruction for different levels within each classroom. It's going to be especially important that they're able to differentiate instruction in the coming year because we're going to have students coming in who have very different experiences when they were out out of the classroom. There were kids who did extremely well and probably advanced more than they might have advanced in the classroom. There's going to be kids who struggled and didn't. So where we might already have had a three-grade level span within any given grade, we could very easily find ourselves at a five-grade level span or more in some classrooms. So trying to look at alternative ways of breaking kids up into different groupings, being flexible in the way that we provide the instruction, making sure that we are continuing to listen to our educators, to our parents, to our students and adapting and reminding everybody that we're we're in this together and we're going to work through it together.
Thank you. William Merlin, next.
Actually, I think this is a a great concern of many parents. The one of the things that helped make a change and to help our children is to have an open door and an open communication that is available to them even before they return back to school. The the problem with most mental ill, mental issues that the kids are having is dealing with not being around others. And it's it's important that there's a relationship that is built there. Now, while I I believe our teachers are well-trained to see symptoms and different things that are going on in the child's mind, but the big thing is, is that our teachers need to be able to have time to listen to what is going on and not paint everybody with a white paintbrush. Each child is going to, would have experienced something different, and the teacher isn't going to know when they come in. So we need to find ways to have counselors to be able to listen to the kids, maybe even have some individual meetings with the kids when they start coming back. But again, we cannot paint everything, okay, with just one topic and one actual position. So we have to be dynamic and we have to pay attention to the children themselves in what they talk about, because that will help them understand what the issues that the child is thinking internally. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia, do you want me to continue through this question? And then the next speaker would be Jake Kukel.
Oh, wow. Um, okay, so mental health is is imperative. It's everything. Counseling needs to be available for these kids. We don't know what they went through, how they struggled or achieved during the downtime. Teachers will know best partially in each individual kid, but there need to be counselors, specifically counselors, available for these children if they need it and we need to try and remove any stigma attached to counseling or mental health in general. Because, I mean, it's good for everybody. It's going to be hard. It's it's hard for everybody. And these kids are, you know, it's it's even harder when you're a kid. I don't know how else to put that. So we need to make it as as easy a transition as possible, get back to whatever normal is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcelo Mancini.
Yes, so this is, this one's near and dear to my heart because, you know, with this critical recovery plan in place, we've had a lot of support from the federal government through the ESER funding, one, two, and three, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So we we have a limitation on those fundings that will be applied to the school district, which includes using those resources to help bring in those that can help out with the mental health issues as well, as well as the other academic challenges that the students and the 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 teachers and administrators are going to face as they continue to 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 resolve what is, and as as one of my candidates has stated earlier, is going to be a long process of recovery. So, you know, it's it's going to be important that, you know, we started this idea of the mental health and working with the students back in April when they started coming back to classes on a limited basis. The funding also has been used to help go with the with the summer school program, which has helped some students, but also there's been a lot of glitches in it. And so unfortunately, there's been some challenges there to try to get students caught up with their credit deficits. So it's something that teachers and, you know, those are the biggest issues I think right now that teachers, parents and staff are really concerned about is making sure that these students are 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 identified and that that they can spend the necessary resources to help them get back up in the credits. This is really applying more to the older students, but at the same time, the younger students have a little bit more time to recover. So definitely something that needs to be taken care of.
Thanks, everyone. And I'm sorry about that. My internet dropped. So welcome to the Zoom era. So the next question, we'll start with David. This will be 60 seconds, so you should see a 30 and 15-second warning. And this question is, how will you encourage civic education, student engagement in government, and voter registration for high school students? We'll start with David.
Social studies and civics have been one of my greatest joys as a student. It's been one of the things that I've made a point of emphasizing to my own sons. I'm fortunate that my two oldest boys were both able to be pages in Olympia, 1% or Dan Meyer, 1% or Zeiger. We've talked a lot about engagement. It's a natural thing for us. Making sure that all students know that they have a voice to encourage them to speak out, to encourage them to be involved in discussions, to make sure that they're aware of how to vote, how to get registered to vote. There are things that a lot of people can kind of take for granted, but not everybody has that same exposure. Not everybody has that same emphasis. So it's important that we do reach out, have more than more opportunities to make sure students know what the process is, to let them know that it doesn't have to be scary, that it can be inviting, and that people, that legislators really do like to hear from kids. I've had my own kids testify in Olympia, and it really lit up the faces of the legislators to hear from a child. It's important that we make sure that they get that opportunity.
Thank you, William.
Well, there there's there's several things that's already in place with this, but yes, civics, our government, the constitution, these are the things that the kids also need to have good instruction with. But and I even myself, I put together a class for vote-wa, just for the adults. And it's not that hard to provide this type of instruction. Now, I would actually focus on interaction with our legislators with the schools and see if we couldn't get the the legislators to personally come down and in the civics class, in the government class, to be there for questions, for answers, to give them steps on what they can do to be better at at being a voter and what it's like to be in the the political arena. So all of these things are important for the kids to feel comfortable with. And also with the legislators visiting, honestly, it kind of brings the government closer to our our constituents as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake.
Yes, um, we need to bring, as we said, we need to bring the government to the people. Kids. Well, let me speak to my education. Civics was lacking when I was in school, and it doesn't seem to have gotten much better. So we need to go back to when we actually taught how government works and how to make it work for us. Yeah, it's it's important. It's it's beyond important, especially if we want to continue to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcello.
So I think this is, this really is critical as with regards to how educators are able to present these type of ideas in in the classroom. I think it's educators need to create an environment, you know, where ideas can be freely, you know, freely discussed, open, without any any concerns with regards to someone's positions with regards to, you know, where their parents, what they've been exposed to with regard to that. I agree. I think local leaders will be more than willing to come into the classrooms and share their thoughts in a in a very, you know, I'm, you know, unbiased position so that that everyone has an opportunity to be able to ask questions from from different perspectives, which I think is so critical. And again, the educators really play a key role in that in in trying to encourage and to excite students to be involved because there's such a lack of of opportunity for these students to to get in, to be engaged at the classroom level. Individuals, parents, and so on, so forth can do that as well.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you for the question. In the elementary, we did mock elections, and I know in the high schools they have elections for different president and all the internal leadership positions that the kids have. I would encourage just the MLK Day, like Martin Luther King Day or something. That's what the PTAs have done, gone down to Olympia. Having legislators in the classroom is also a great idea to encourage that. I know that many of them come to the graduations and other important events that the schools have. So those kind of things to mentor and or talk about the process and various positions on things, really, especially the mock elections are great because they can really think it through. So.
Thank you. Next question, also 60 seconds. How would you, and we'll start with William on this one. How would you help to create a climate in our schools to lessen the incidence of bullying? And what steps would you take to ensure that the school district addresses this issue? Again, 60 seconds, and we'll start with William.
Thank you. This is a challenge. It's in the Puyallup School District. We have not seen the violence that we that we've seen in other areas. But we do have the SROs, and the SROs are actually working with our faculty to teach them and about watching out what's going on. But the biggest thing that we need to do is make sure that we're holding people accountable, I mean, for their actions. The I'm not saying by any means that if a child is bullying that they go to prison by any means, but we need to have, you know, counseling with them. We need to explain to them how it's affecting other people and basically make it personal that where they understand that it is hurtful. But but we have to actually continue to engage the SROs. We have to have our counselors and our faculty, you know, on on track to understand what bullying looks like, even if that the person is hiding it from the faculty, because that does happen. So so anyways, I just think that we need to continue to be strong in holding people accountable for their actions. And honestly, I know my son was threatened on school grounds from a bully. And of course, I went directly in and worked with the vice principal and the principal at that school.
Thank you. Jake.
So we start from the beginning. As young as possible, kids need to learn how to treat people and that everybody matters and everybody has feelings. And every feeling is valid. When we start from the beginning, you you got something to build off of. And that doesn't address anybody now. I mean, that's the future. So people know what bullying looks like. Teachers and staff at schools know what bullying looks like. We need to trust them to bring it to our attention so we can hold the people accountable within reason. As it was said, we're not sending kids off to prison for calling somebody fat or whatever, but they need to be held accountable. They need to know there are, you know, repercussions for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcello.
So this this whole idea really, really starts in 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 the home and and it has to end in the home as far as communicating and and discussing types of these bullying types of events that happen. It's important that as adults in in the schools that we're treating everyone with dignity and respect and that when these incidents do occur, that the right individuals are contacted. And as my kids went through, they faced these type of same issues and 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 when we discuss this with our with our son or with our daughter, you know, we would have discussions with those involved at the school, you know, and to try to head these things off before they escalated. So I think a lot of it has to do with communication with with school leaders. It has to do with communication with families and parents. And it's and it's just sending the message that, you know, this type of stuff won't be tolerated and that we focus on treating others with respect. And I think that that can resolve a lot of the issues of today.
Thank you, Nicole.
There's a special golden rule out there to remind us all of that we treat others as we want to be treated. And I believe that that rule is something we need to remind our kids about and that definitely just especially when we haven't been connected, it's going to be taking that time to get in the classroom and build relationship. I believe that consistency is there for parents and kids, and I I appreciate the administrators that I've seen at the schools. My son was accused and then through communication found out it wasn't him. So it's just being consistent. It's having the the kids discussions with the principal and the vice principals and the other administrators at the high schools and the junior highs to make sure that there is that consistency to take care of the issues that are out there.
Thank you, David.
So the district has been increasingly adopting social emotional learning. So the district has been increasingly adopting social emotional learning curriculum, working to advance our students' education on those topics. That's going to help kind of build that foundation for kids. Beyond that, though, it's really messages of inclusion. It's making sure that each student knows that they're welcome in the building, whether it be students who come from a different language background, whether it be students who come from families that are in the LGBT community, or the students themselves, making sure that everybody knows that they're welcome. That modeling of inclusion begins at the top in each building, making sure that everybody knows that they can be safe, considered to be safe there, and that there are supports there. The district has recently tried to implement additional safe places for students, teachers that are identifiable as space, as safe resources for students. And it's an important thing to make sure that kids are aware that they have someplace safe, welcome, that they can feel secure and be protected.
Thank you. Next question, 90 seconds. How, and we'll start with Jake on this one. How would you approach adoption of curriculum to ensure that it includes accurate information about racism in American history?
Well, the easy answer is actual history. I mean, we shouldn't be sugarcoating it or changing it. It happened. Let's just say what happened. We can't change anything if we don't know what happened. That in 90 seconds. Yeah. I learned not too long ago about the, was it the Tulsa massacre? How did I learn that? In my 40s? How do, how do I know about George Washington's wooden teeth, but not that, you know, we dropped bombs on our own country? We need, we need to tell the truth from the beginning. The unadulterated truth. The, the Germans teach Nazism, so they don't do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcello?
So, we've had a recent example in the school district with regards to the ninth grade history curriculum, and, and how it was presented by the school district, and the discussions around that. As I spent some time researching that curriculum, I mean, again, accuracy, the, the question becomes is, you know, what do you include with regards to the type of curriculum, the type of events that shaped and formed our country? There's been a lot of debate about that. There's been debate about, you know, how much, how much should be included, and, and what types of information is provided, and then also what kind of supplemental information is being provided to the teachers as they go through that, through that, that curriculum. There was concern that the, the curriculum was, was focusing more on the, the sins of our nation, and that from, from, from that standpoint, we were, you know, not necessarily focusing on the great things that happened in our nation. And again, we're not a perfect nation by far, but we've come through many years, through, you know, this, so, through our civil rights movement and other laws, we have made strides to improve our history. And so we need to make sure that we acknowledge that, and at the same time, understand that we have, we have still room for improvement with regards to making sure that our history stays accurate, so that's it.
Thank you. Nicole?
I believe it's using a lot of different resources, like Marcello said. The social studies definitely usually brings in those history aspects, but from like the STEM program or the new science program that they talked about, there are articles and different aspects of it that I believe, like comics or different aspects of how you can educate it, not just in a textbook, and you know, straight up old school, what I would call. But to make sure that the school board, as a board that we look over the curriculums, make sure that it's speaking to the marginalized groups, the other areas of that we're not enhancing one side or another, blacks, whites, you name it, but to make sure that we have an accurate history timeline that would be within OSPI's context of that, along with the school districts, meeting the common core standard, standards, and make sure that we can have those, so studies, curriculums are jam-packed to fill in the history and the other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. David?
So I've written extensively about this on my website. You can look for my website, www.electdavidberg.com, and I define right specifically on the role of the school board in curriculum adoption. And it was triggered by that incident that Marcello mentioned regarding the adoption of the ninth grade world history curriculum. We have a very clearly defined process in the district that we're to follow in a curriculum adoption process. Begins with teachers reviewing what possible curriculums are out there, making recommendations to a review board that can include parents. That review board, then taking the recommendations of the, of the teachers, looking back at that curriculum, that community group reviewing what's been proposed, and making a final, or making a recommendation as to what gets proposed and for the school board to adopt or not. That process is very clear, it's very explicit, it's very easy to follow, and it's, it's there in writing on the district's website. It wasn't followed particularly well this time. At the very last moment, it seems that there were objections that the world history curriculum was perhaps not pro-American enough, and it brought the entire process to a halt. There were multiple steps along the way where people could have raised objections, could have been involved in the process. And for some reason, people dropped the ball and didn't get involved, and that's this existing school board that had that opportunity as well, and we didn't take advantage of that opportunity. We need to make sure we follow the rules that we have in place, follow them fairly, and do what we have promised to do.
Thank you. William?
So, the first thing about teaching anything is that we have to start with facts. And the facts don't change, the facts don't lie. But the thing is, is it's actually the presentation style sometimes that we need to look at. But in regards to the curriculum itself, we have books, honestly textbooks, that from the old days, if you will, that they do have the accurate information in there. And if, if, while we're looking at things, you know, I'm finding that so many of these, the new curriculum that keeps coming forward, there's a lot of agenda, okay, in it. And that's not helping our kids, okay, learn, it's not helping the way that our kids move forward. But the process to get them approved, while it is very specific, and I don't remember exact timeframes, but there's very little time from start to finish that parents can actually be involved. And we have to understand that our parents, okay, most of them, they both work. They don't have just a massive amount of time that they can come out during the middle of the day to be able to participate. So we have to make things easier for them to be involved, and put it out there, put, put it out on the websites. Let, let everybody look at it. We don't need to have just a single committee, because things get missed, things get dropped. So everybody should be working together for the common good and the common betterment for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next question, and we'll start with Marcello. How do you envision helping the most vulnerable students achieve and graduate, especially those who are homeless, migrants, live in foster care, or have disabilities? What programs and supports should we have to help them succeed? Marcello, and this will be 90 seconds.
So the, the district, you know, the district has already done an admirable job as far as embracing students with various backgrounds, by providing meals, interpreters and other services, gives students an opportunity to assimilate into the district community and community. District officials continue to need to work with families and utilize the community resources, such as the YMCA Youth Investment Center, Community Youth Services, and other organizations in a collaborative effort. So a lot of those programs are in place already, in talking to several parents in my doorbelling that have special needs children. You know, they, they express some concerns about the funding, and there's always never enough funding for, for programs. But I think our district has done a fairly decent job in making sure and helping that, helping those individuals. And these services that provide a stepping stone for those in need, that need temporary assistance. So, so as the community and families lead these efforts, I think students will feel empowered and accepted with the desire to excel in their academic endeavors and contribute, and contribute to our diverse culture.
Thank you. Nicole?
I, I was so excited to see that they have the Kessler Building being built, and that's for many certain new services for some of those type of students, to give them a little bit more specialized things that they can have. My son is on an IEP and has been. So it's encouraging those services which are on a regular basis and with the, with the different counselors and staff, and, and getting kids and getting, getting labels off of kids that have this type of either educational type of academic problems, or they're, they're just born that way. There's nothing that they can do about that. And, and being disabled or having, needing special services, if we can afford in the budget, any kind of service, equipment, hardware, like specialized chairs where they can walk. I've seen military where they have been able to walk in a special, specialized chair. So those kind of things that we can support.
Thank you. Thank you, David?
So when I'm talking about what we're doing for our kids, I try not to talk about what we're doing for all kids. I try to talk about what we're doing for each kid. And the reason is that each kid is different. Each kid has different needs. We need to target our interventions for students based on individual needs whenever possible. One thing to keep in mind is that often, too often, there's actually artificial barriers that are keeping kids from getting the resources that they need. There's barriers in transportation, there's barriers that the time that programs are available aren't times that kids can get to those services. If you've got, again, a family that has two working parents, can the parents get the kid to a service that might start early or end late? We need to make sure that we're looking for artificial barriers to participation, and make sure that we remove those whenever possible, so that we're doing our best to include kids in whatever services that we find necessary for them. Our community actually has done a great job of helping to support kids in, in so many different ways, and the district has some great partnerships with so many different community organizations that can help students, that can give them additional opportunities, and trying to continue to build on that, take advantage of our community support for our schools. The Kewalip Schools have a long history of excellence and of community partnerships. We need to continue to take advantage of that and make sure that we're keeping that in mind when we're dealing with the needs of each of our students.
Thank you. William?
Well, a, as a father of a 10-year-old that's been on IEP ever since pre-K, I have, I've learned, I mean, how, how things can run, and how, how well that the Kewalip School District actually does with a lot of the kids. And of course, we do have language barriers, okay? So I know that we have some multilingual teachers, and of course, that is important to maintain. But the thing is, is that the school district cannot do it by themselves. They have to partner with other groups that actually specialize in helping. And like we heard one of the candidates talking about transportation and other type of barriers. And we need to engage the rest of the community, because the thing that we need to do is become a full team for the, for the betterment of our kids, including the ones that are vulnerable. And again, that could be language barrier, could be a disability, you know, whether it be a physical or a learning disability. So I already mentioned it, but we, we learned with my daughter how she learns. And of course, we took the initiative to start talking to the schools and her counselors to, they basically become a team to try to make things better. And I really think that teamwork is the goal that we should be focused on, and that we need to identify the, the kids that need the help, and then we need to focus on them, because like David said, each child is different. And we're not all made exactly the same, so we have to be paying attention to what's going on in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake?
So last summer, our foster family, we, we fostered a homeless family. The daughter was falling very behind in school, and it was, it was so hard to watch. The, the help is out there, but it's just, it's, it's not obvious, it's not in your face, and nobody seems to know where to get it. So we need, we need them to work with the teachers and the schools, but we need to make it readily available. Just, just being out there isn't enough. They need to be made aware of it. There is help, and people who are willing to help. Especially these kids are the same way. They, there's no reason anybody should get any less than anybody else. Everybody can be words. Everybody can, sorry. We can do it for everybody, and simply that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question. This will be 60 seconds, and we'll start with Nicole. What plans do you have for the school district to work with the Kewalip tribe in educating all children?
As we need, as they need in our district spots, then I would believe that we put them in there, but I believe that they have their own school district, so I'm taken a little bit back on the question, but as support services, like I said, from the state level, if we need to support them with some of those to increase their, their classrooms, or, or the, the staff, or the curriculums, or things that they need to pass those along, and just give administrative support through either the district staff or the principals from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
A lot of this comes back to authentic engagement with the people who are involved. It's asking questions and listening to their answers, it's making sure that we're reaching out to the representatives of the tribe to talk about what they see as the needs, what they see as the shortfalls, and matching that up with what we see in our own data. We know that our native students are tending to drop out more than students from other populations. So we need to be able to work with the representatives from the tribe to identify what they see as possible causes there, to actually talk to the students, to talk to the parents, and again, to listen, engage, and have authentic and honest conversations about what can we do. Too often, we think that we know, but we don't bother to involve everyone in the process. We need to make sure that we're very careful, very deliberate about engaging everybody that can work together on the topic, to listen to everybody's opinion before we reach forward and actually try and act, because, just because you think you have the answer, if you haven't engaged everybody that's involved in the process, you, you might end up going the wrong direction.
Thank you. William?
So this is a unusual question, not one that I was expecting. But the thing is, is that it comes down to accountability, and it comes down to teamwork. From my understanding, and I'm not positive on this, but the chief Leshy schools are in their own district. But the thing is, is that we can reach out to the district and ask questions with their teachers, with their faculty. We can actually share some of the information that we have. But we need to be respectful to their heritage as well, and understand that their heritage is important to them, while it should be. But we also need to engage and help them get either, rather, I don't know all the details on that school, but we, we need to make sure that they have the tools and the curriculum, okay, that they need to be able to teach the, the kids. We also should actually engage with them to help because they do have a higher dropout rate than the Pialup Schools. Thank you.
Jake.
There we go. So this to me is a bigger, is bigger than the Pialup School District. This, this goes to my point I made in the opening statement that we need a standard and we need to bring the indigenous groups into the fold to be part of the standard. And we all work together for the common goal. Yeah, we, we all work together. Let's just all work together. This, that's really, it should be a state or even national. Sorry. Yes, yes. So bring the Pualup Tribes into whatever decisions we make, especially if they are about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcello.
So, yeah, this one, this one also kind of caught me a little bit off guard, but I think, you know, as, as we look at some statistics in, in the school district, I think they definitely highlighted that there's been some challenges, just not in, in, in several different cultures. But I think this is one that you probably just need to just kind of counsel with and find out what are their, what are the needs of the Pialup Tribe within this school district. What are some things that as a school district we can do versus what we can't do? But I think also that there's got to be something, you know, there as far as, you know, cultural inclusion. And if there's, if there's any issues or concerns that they have that they feel like the, the Pialup Tribe is, is not being a part of our community and part of our school district and ways that we can, you know, try to understand what the issues are and then what ways that we could potentially help, help them and partner with them and, and meet the needs that they've identified as, as the, as the issues with, with regards to that. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Next question, sixty seconds, and we'll start with David. How will you address the high rate of suicide among high school students? David.
So had a conversation about this topic with my oldest son when he was here at the beginning of his summer vacation. And the reason it came up is because we were talking about a district response and some community response to discussions of LGBT inclusion. Our LGBT students in particular are at an extremely elevated risk of teen suicide. Particularly when they feel like they've been excluded, when they've been targeted. And for each single incident of bullying that's targeted those students, their suicide risk increases. It's actually quite scary to, to see some of those numbers and to, to realize the, the risk that these kids are at. Making sure that we have those community support resources is important. We don't have an unlimited supply of counselors. We don't have an unlimited supply of funding. But again, going back to the ideas of inclusion, of making sure students know that there's someplace safe that they can go, whether it's a safe teacher, safe resource, safe counselor, that they know that they can be welcomed, included and have a place to turn.
Thank you. William.
So this is definitely a concern that we all need to be paying attention to. While I haven't personally experienced it with my kids, but we have to have an open communication with kids. The COVID situation and the second, the separation from their friends and moving into maybe games and things of this nature really has not provided that interaction need that they have. So going back to what I said earlier, we need to help our, help our teachers be able to communicate with the kids, be able to be an open door for them. And that way they can express the way they feel openly without the, the, the fear of retaliation. And then we need to make sure that whenever there is a challenge that we bring the parents in on it and make sure the parents know in case that they didn't see it. These kids, you know, they're struggling with their friends and with their team, you know, being around others. These, these things have caused some of the issues. Thank you.
Jake.
Death by suicide is unfortunately one hundred percent preventable. We need mental health care for children. It's it's inexcusable really, that we would let it, let this happen to anybody. The, the suicide rates keep climbing. We need to normalize counseling. We need to destigmatize all facets of mental health. We need to give children somewhere they can go. Every person, well, every staff or every staff member in a school needs to be a safe place. And if they're not, they shouldn't be there in the first place. I mean, bring the parents in, yes. But we need to be aware that sometimes the parents are an issue. And we need to know how to react to that.
Thank you. Marcello.
I think over, over, over the years, I've heard many stories and sadly, some tragic stories, but also some great stories of, of students looking out for one another. So I think as, as, as we look at this issue, we really, you know, you know, we, we shouldn't rely on the students, but students are very, are very capable of, of being able to help make aware, especially to, to teachers and faculty of students that may be struggling. I think also Emerald Ridge is an example where they've established a health center for mental health and so that students can feel, as David said, I think I agree with him with regards to making sure that we have good safe spaces in our schools or safe people to, to be able to talk to, that they've been able to put together a little program so that students that are, are having mental health issues can go to these clinics and, and receive the help that they need. So I think it's, it should be an ongoing, these clinics should be focused on the mental health side of things because I think that's that's an important thing to happen in the schools and to help students out and they'll know that they have that safe space.
Thank you. Nicole.
I believe, especially just getting back with COVID, the connections will be a hundred percent better. And that is been our main issue. From hearing the last couple of school board meetings. I believe that they are in the process of getting another outside group, since this is such a topic over the whole nation right now. These services are hard to find. And I believe it's Heart or Heartland or something is one of the outside of classroom times, supporting counselors. I know our schools have some of the greatest high school counselors that I've seen. But just also letting churches or other outside counselors come in, especially at crisis times. I think those are really essential. If things come up, but just getting back to a schedule and getting minds on subjects is gonna be, take us ahead a lot and that I think is our spot.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the last question. And this is an audience question and we will be starting with, with William on this one. As a former student, I often felt like student experiences came second to the test scores. How will you change that? William, sixty seconds.
Well, I mean, I don't have a lot of information about how that they felt that way. There can be several reasons. The big thing is, is that if we're gonna be telling our students that they have to do so well on these tests and forget about them personally and emotionally. I think that's what, that the question is really about. And, and that is destructive to the, the self-confidence and the student as a whole. So we need to be understanding that our teaching needs to be focused on the education. But we need to also have a good control over the relationship that can be built between the other students and the teachers. We have, I won't have time to explain everything, but, but anyways, but we have things that we can do. And, but, but a lot of it comes back to communication and the way that things are presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll read the question again since there was as a former student, I often felt like student experiences came second to the test scores. How will you change that? And we're on Jake here.
Testing is, is such a small part of the whole story. We need, well, okay, in my life, I've known people that were fantastic test takers and didn't know anything about what they were testing for. I'm, I'm one of them. And some people are fantastic and just don't know how to take a test. So basing everything on that is, is defeatist. For at least half of us. We need to empower the teachers because they see them every day. They know how hard they're trying. They know what their actual level of understanding is and they know where they need the help. So let them help. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcello.
Yeah, it's interesting. I, I, I'm a, I'm a proponent of balance, life balance, work balance. And then we put the students in place. We're gonna talk about life balance and educational balance. And I think, you know, over the years, the school district is, is quite, you know, has taken away quite a number of things. You talk about sixth grade camp and other things like that, that the kids really look forward to. And, and now, right now, there's, you know, not a lot of, of extra opportunities out there for that. So, you know, this is a great question and I think this would be a great question for the school board and students to get together and other administrators and say, you know, what can we do? Are there any ideas of how we can make the student experience better and, and not so focused on, you know, this, the idea of tests. And, and tests are necess, you know, are, are necessary. You have to be able to evaluate a student and where they are and where they're progressing. But at the same time, it's important that we maybe get some feedback from them and say, what kind of other experiences would you like to see happen in the district? And, and try to make that balance a little bit easier for, for our students. I mean, they face a lot of pressures in the world today.
Thank you. Nicole.
I guess I would say not sharing all the grades out loud is that one of those things that you say, oh, well, fifty percent passed the test and the other didn't. I had one of those science teachers that did that. He sat us in our seats according to where we were in our science class. And those type of things make you feel degraded at times and like you can't learn. So I would say empowering the teachers and empowering the students with if the kids didn't do well with going over the stuff again. Maybe not at that exact moment, but you know, along the way to bring more impact into those learning areas.
Thank you. David.
So testing has a role. Clearly, if we've got a test that can be used by teachers to better inform their teaching practices to make changes, then that's useful. If it's a test so that we've got a number that we can report that doesn't actually affect how we're doing any of our teaching, then that doesn't provide any value and it's a waste of all our time. But there are so many things that kids are involved in that we don't do a standardized test for. The music programs, our arts programs, our current technical education programs, none of those things are tested with a smarter balance association test. Our sports, the varsity letters and community service that our kids are able to obtain. There is so much more to their educational experiences that aren't things that appear on a test score. We reward those kids. We recognize those kids. And it's absolutely essential that we continue to embrace all those other things that bring so much more depth and complexity and so much more value to the educational experience than simply a number that can appear on a report someplace.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. I'm sorry that we didn't get to all the audience questions. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We will change the order of the opening statement. So we'll start with Nicole Weber and then David Burke and then William Merlin and then Jake Kukow and then Marcello Rancini. So Nicole, one minute.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum. And thank you for those in the audience that we can't see, but that are participating. We appreciate your questions. I have been an advocate in the air in this school district. Been trying at my kid's school at Carson, got some crosswalks in and some safety measures put in. I believe our schools need to be safe, need to be places of education that is strong and basics of education that we can compete, as I said before, in the world. We have the Olympics going on right now and it's just a great opportunity and time to keep thinking how we can, can move ahead. This COVID crisis has made it where we need persistency in our education that our schedule and for administrators, teachers and staff will get back in the elementary and secondary areas and make sure that we make them feel confident and supported with the tools necessary to build a strong community. Thank you.
Thank you. David.
Thank you again for this opportunity. The role of the school board is defined on the district's website as having a vision for the district to implement. The vision is continuous improvement for our students. Another role of the board is to hold everyone accountable for achieving the goals of the district. It's holding the administrators accountable. It's holding our educators accountable. It's holding the board members accountable. We need to make sure that we're doing all that we can to engage with our community, to invite parent participation, to invite teacher participation, to invite administrative participation and to listen to each one of those parties so that we can work together. We're all better off when we're working together on things. There are so many things, so many more things that we have in common than that divide us. We need to focus on the things that we do have in common to work together, serve each of our kids with the services that they need. Pialup has a great tradition of excellence. We can continue that. We can build on that and I'm looking forward to being a part of that.
Thank you. William.
I'd just start by saying thank you for this forum. You know, we all, you know, have ideas that are for our schools. I, I would say the biggest thing that, that I, I believe we need to focus on is to get back to the basics. Okay, we need to get back to the academics of our school. We need to bring up our OSPI score, scorecard or scorecard. Yep. So we, we need to be focused on our kids in all aspects, including the, the mental side, the academic side. And we need to get back to having our, our, our teachers and our students working together. We need to make sure our teachers don't feel like they're gonna be, they're gonna have retaliation if they speak out. You know, this is a great big multifaceted thing that we have to do. And the school board has that ability to do that. And it's time for everybody to start working together for the good of our kids. And let's stop bickering and let's stop fighting amongst ourselves. It's time to focus on our kids. Our kids are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake.
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters for hosting and thank you for the attend, to the attendees for allowing us to speak directly to you. Well, I don't have my own kids. I do have two stepdaughters and a foster daughter in the Franklin Pierce School District. And I've seen the disparity in school districts and I will do whatever I can to change it. I believe in the power of community. And that we can increase the success of our students by working together with parents, teachers, local lawmakers and the school board for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcello. You're on mute.
Again, the, the role of a board and the board member specifically is to hire, supervise and evaluate superintendent to set vision, mission and strategic goals for the district. And then also to review and revise and adopt policies. Within that scope, as an individual member, it is my responsibility to collaboratively work with my board member peers and help govern the district, create conditions that allow for all within the district to be successful, to include holding the district accountable for student learning, successful student learning, and lastly, represent and engage with the voters in educational matters. In my background and my career, that's what I do. I create visions with, with the help of my leadership team so that we can accomplish our mission and, and be held, and we are held accountable for the results. so that we can accomplish our mission and, and be held, and we're held accountable for the results in that. And so that's something that I will be able to bring to the school board is my experiences in the private sector of leading teams and achieving results. Thank you.
Thank you all. In ballot order, the candidates for Puyallup School District Director, position one are Maddie Nam's William T. Rowland, Jake Kukow, Mary Shuldheitz, and Cody Bruschinski. And for Puyallup School District Director, position four, the candidates are Marcello Mancini, Nicole Weber, and David Burke. You all should have received your ballots by now. Be sure to vote early and no later than August third. I'd like to thank the candidates who participated in this forum tonight and the timekeeper, Terry Baker, the Tacoma County League of Women Voters and our community cosponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grit City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, South Sound Neighborhood Council, Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see other League of Women Voter forums at League of Women at Tacoma Pierce LWV dot org. Read your voter's pamphlet and look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do all that you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before August third. Thank you all and have a great evening. Bye-bye.